Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, August 14, 2023, at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. All right, item three, Mr. Stewart.
Four items on closed session tonight. First is confidence of real property negotiator. The address is 8833 Cedar Street. And negotiators, myself, Vicky Dewey, Senior Property Manager, Meltdown Management, under negotiation, price and terms of payment. Second item is anticipation litigation. We have one case. Third item is confidence of real property negotiator. Address is 16429 Bellflower Boulevard. Agency negotiators, myself, negotiating parties Carol Waite, price and terms of payment again. Last item is 2,000 acre feet of groundwater. Agency negotiator, myself, negotiating party Steve Lenten, Bellflower Somerset Mutual Water Company, price and terms of payment.
All right, are there any conflicts on these closed session items?
Mr. Mayor, I am conflicted out of 3A. I have property within 500 feet of that Cedar Street address.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops is recusing himself on item 3A. Anyone else? Okay, and there's no one here in the public to speak. So with that, we will recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, August 14, 2024, at 7:00 PM back to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Before the roll call, I'd just like to make an announcement. On Friday, we received a letter from Councilmember, Mayor Protem Hamada, that he is resigning his position from the City Council. We thank him for his service. We will miss him. It's really sad, but we respect his decision to resign from the Bellflower City Council. So with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Dutton, and the pleasurable agents will be led by Joel Huckman, the Director of Public Safety. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for all that you do, and watch over us here tonight as we do the city business for the greater good. Watch over the residents of the city of Bellflower, and let them feel safe and enjoy the greatness that Bellflower has all to bring. Watch over our first responders, and all the firestorms that were in Maui, and all those people that lost an awful lot. Lift them up, and do what you can to make them better for everybody. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and join me in saying, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ray, and thank you, Joel. Let me start with the City Council announcements. The city of Bellflower partnered with a company called Care Solas to provide mental health support services to Bellflower residents. Care Solas offers 24/7 streamlined communication and coordination to promptly connect individuals with the right resources and appropriate care. Available 24 hours a day, every day of the year, Care Solas provides assistance in over 200 languages, ensuring inclusivity and accessibility for all residents. For more information, please visit caresolas.com/CA-Bellflower, or call 888-515-7881. And I encourage everyone to please share this with as many people as you know, so that this service can be available. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Come join us in downtown Bellflower for great music, dancing, and exciting family fun at the Final Summer Street Fest this Thursday, August 17. These events feature live music, food, crafts, and business vendors, inflatable slides, and obstacle courses, along with games with the Bellflower Recreation in Motion, also known as BRIM. The event will begin at 6:30 PM and will conclude at 9:30 PM. Entrance is free, and vendor pricing will vary. You can also visit the Parks and Recreation booth at the Street Fest to share your thoughts about the parks and the recreation programs in the city. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the whole community to join their next monthly morning mingle, which will be held in the chamber and take place Tuesday, August 29, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, and that would be 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bellflower Connect is an expansive framework of specialized wire and wireless technology, which, once installed, will provide free internet connectivity for Bellflower residents, businesses, and visitors. ICCN and city staff are actively working to complete the new smart initiative through the use of indoor and outdoor access points positioned throughout the city. This will provide high-speed wireless access for all smart devices and laptops within the city's boundaries. For more information on this initiative, please visit www.bellflower.org/connect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council.
All right. If you speak, please sign in, state your name, and speak to the microphone directly. Thank you.
I'm here again, reminding you-
Can you lower the microphone? There you go.
I'm here again, reminding you that it's almost a year. September 4th, it'll be a year that the last person died on my corner who was disabled. I believe all the people that were killed on my corner in the last 20 or more years were disabled. There's been many, many accidents, many things. Supposedly, the flashing, I'm advocating for flashing yellow lights. I appreciate that you moved the crosswalk to where it should have been 20 or 25 years ago. That's very much appreciated, a lot late, but appreciated. The bus stop has made a huge improvement on the corner. It's now where it should be, where it should have been. Supposedly, the flashing yellow lights have been approved. I'm trying to pin down a date. I just spent my entire day fighting another corruption scam, swindle, fraud, and everybody coming at me from, so I'm disgusted. But we really need flashing yellow lights. It's supposedly approved. I'm trying to track a date of when it's going to happen. My neighbors told me a year ago, Darlene, we have called, we have tried, we have called, we have tried, we have called, we have been calling every time a person turns up dead on the corner, and we've been totally ignored. Good luck. And guess what? On September 4th, they're going to be telling the same thing. We told you so. We told you so. Eat it. We told you. We called, we tried, we did this, we did that, we've all tried. We don't believe, you know, we don't know how to make it happen. We call, we email, we send photos, we do this and that, and we hear nothing, and we're told nothing, and they have given up. Okay? So I started coming here after September 4th of last year. I'm not going to give up. And I've heard 100 stories, lies, twists, all day long today, and the defending of those lies from three different agencies that should have integrity and do not, and defend their lack of integrity and the lack of shame from those people today was horrendous. I really want to know, is it coming? Is it being approved? And is it going to happen that we will have flashing yellow lights on that corner? Clark Avenue and Rose Street, to protect the disabled. And then we have the other issue at the other end of the block, where there's a sidewalk that's like this. I was talking to the man who lives there, the homeowner. He did talk to Len. Len told him it'll happen when everybody who doesn't have a curb gets a curb, and not until then. Meanwhile, we're still seeing kids flying over. I'm standing there talking to him this way, when he says, "Did you see that?" All I heard was zoom, zoom, zoom. It's like the Grand Prix in Long Beach, in front of his house. And the disabled are trying to get over that thing as well. We have a problem trying to keep the people that we should represent safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Palacios. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In response to your question, I personally called you last month on the phone, and publicly I stated that at the last meeting we had, the first, we only had one meeting last month, I said that the flashing lights have been ordered July 1st. It's been approved, ordered, and I gave you that based on the information from Public Works, it will be installed within four months. So I'm repeating again my response to you. I don't want to hear anymore that there's no response. I've responded to you. I called you personally one more time, and then publicly I responded to your question. So there is a date that I gave you already, okay? You can go back to the public records. It was very clear that I responded to the question. It will be done based on the information from Public Works within four months, okay? Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Ma-
Good evening. Yes?
Yes. Ms. Mark Pickler?
Um, what about me?
Oh, is that even on?
Yeah, so once I started paying attention, I just noticed there were more trees around the play structures, and there's big shade things. And I started, you know, I visited some family in Michigan, and I noticed even in Michigan, there was big shade structures over top of the play structures. So I just wanted to see if there was any awareness of that or planning towards that. The second one is speeding. I know you probably hear it a lot. It seems like on our streets, it's just, you know, the speeding is out of control. So again, I started to look around at other cities, neighboring cities. I know you can't put speed bumps everywhere, but the roundabouts and the busier intersections, some stop signs have helped in my part of the city. But again, I wanted to bring that to your attention. I think there's just got to be cost-effective ways of doing that. So I wanted to see if there was anything on the, in the plans for that. And then also, like, I mentioned that I do have kids, and it's hard. My wife is at home getting the kids dinner and getting them ready for bed right now, and I'm here. The ability, I've seen other boards or organizations where you can put public comment via, I don't know, Zoom or electronic, you know, remote public comments. So I wanted to see if that was something that, I believe you guys did it maybe, or the city did it during COVID, but, you know, I think that would be a good way to engage the city as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. May I know what area you live, sir? What street? I don't know your address. Yes, what street?
Clark, 91 area.
Clark, okay. Okay, okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Let me just respond. I think the question is very timely. We will be having a study session on the Park Master Plan, so keep an eye on that. I think it's going to be happening the next couple of months. Okay? So we're going to be looking at all the parks and see what we can do. All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm here to address the issue of coyotes that have been infiltrating our city streets and up and down the bike trails, and what we can do about this to warn the people about this. I witnessed myself, a pack of two, and then right shortly after that, a pack of four coyotes running down the bike trail at about 11 o'clock at night. And I think that this is a situation that we have to address and let the public know about it, whether it's signs along the bike trail, don't be out at night, or whatever, those coyotes. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Friedland.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Okay, very good. Can we have Joel address that question? Or you want to, or you want just, if you can respond just in general, what we're doing, because they need to know what we've been doing.
Well, we've been doing some trapping. We don't talk a lot about it, but we've been doing a few sessions per year where we look to places where they're frequenting, and in fact, kind of what you mentioned was one of the locations, actually. And a lot of the experts will say that's not the way to get out of the problem. They'll say, first of all, you never get rid of them, they're going to be with us forever, and that's true of cities all over Southern California. But what we try to do is warn residents to take away their food sources as best they can, and that would be dog food, fallen fruit, you know, pets that are left unattended, all those kinds of things that we should know. And between that, discouraging them from being here, and then, in some cases, we're taking some of these animals, that's our plan. And if we have certain locations that are chronically being witnessed as having a coyote coming through, we'd like to hear about those, because as we work with our trapper, we can sometimes selectively figure out the best places, most strategic places, to do the best good. So that's something I can speak with her in a lot.
Yeah, how about the question about signage? Do we have sufficient signage out there, especially in the parks and the trail?
I wouldn't say it's sufficient. There's not really much for signage. We try to do the education, but if that's something that, you know, we wanted to look at, we can find some key places to remind people.
Okay.
Hopefully, there's enough on the internet and enough people talking to recognize that wildlife is something we all need to be aware of. Fortunately, we know bears, like other places in Southern Cal, but we do have what we have, and we need to be mindful and act correctly in that reality.
Okay, thank you.
But we can discuss signs.
All right, if you have a more specific question, you can talk to Joel.
We can talk in the lobby.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a voice tonight. First, I want to start out by telling you how much I have loved the Street Fest this year. I think it's the first time I've really participated. I've gone to everyone. I'm looking forward to Thursday night. I have danced my, you know, what, off, up there. I love it. The bands have been spectacular, the people are wonderful. I wish we could keep doing it just like all year, but I know we can't. But another concern I have, and it was really brought home on my drive here tonight, is all these new, or these young guys and kids on these little electric or motorized bike things, those little tiny things that they're everywhere. Tonight, I was coming south on Woodruff, and at Alondra, the light was green. Everybody's ready to go, and here come three of them shooting across the wrong side of the street against the, you know, against the red light, and it scares me to death because somebody's going to get hurt. You don't see them, they're fast, they're not paying attention. There's probably not a whole lot that you guys can do, but I just wanted to voice my concern about it, because my fiancee, Carl, and I have been talking about it a lot lately because they just, they don't obey the laws. They just shoot out, you know, and the driver is going to be held responsible, most likely, even though there's nothing you can do. So, but I just wanted to bring that up and tell you, keep up the good work with the Street Fest. We've been enjoying Thompson Park Pool this year, been bringing friends to it. Good job.
Okay, thank you. And please come back again at the next meeting. Mr. Stewart, can we look into that, motor, scooters?
Yeah, it's a problem everywhere. Certainly in my neighborhood as well. Yeah, we'll look into it for you.
My name's Linda Fry.
You can always say something, but please sign in, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, please sign in, state your name.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
We call that the teenage takeover.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, anyone else? Now, this is public comments, Mrs. Palacios.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, Ken.
Been a while since I've been here and everything, and I do want to compliment you guys do about your street festival. So it's been very successful.
Correction, it's not your, our Street Fest.
Right, okay, our Street Fest, yeah. Our Street Fest, Bellflower Street Festival. So that's turned out very, very good. It's very positive to the community. It'd be very nice, of course, we can't do it every single year, I mean, more times, but anyways, the reason I wanted to be here, you probably know that I do tax sales. I do tax lien and tax deed investing full-time, all around the country, and you've probably been seeing how the stock market has been going up and down, and you probably saw last year how the stock market has gone down last year. And you know, probably a lot of people who've had in their 401Ks and their pensions have gone down last year, okay? I really believe that the city should look into something, because when we invest, we invest with the government, okay? We invest with the county, and the county is giving us 16%, 18% interest, 25% interest, secured by the government on that. So just something for you guys to look at, the stock market is going to be a yo-yo like this, and this is a good way to try to think outside the box and say, what do we do? You know, because hedge funds are doing this, Wall Street's doing this on that, and I don't know why cities don't get into it, because it's right with your government on that. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Palacios, you, no, no, you have your three minutes already, ma'am. This is public comment.
I want to put a smile on you guys' face. My name's Peter Ancorn, all setting right here.
Yeah, please.
I got a good report. The effort for keeping the homeless moving over on the West Side, it seems to be working. I haven't been over there as much lately, but I was talking with Joel some time back, and pretty much keep them moving. I appreciate it. It seems like that's working over there. I don't let them sleep on my porch anymore, and I think they seem to understand it. So I don't know if you're able to locate them at the shelter or what, but I appreciate the effort.
Good.
But they want to set up camp and drive stakes, and can't do it. But thank you very much for the effort.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the kind words.
And please come back for the next meeting, too. Anyway, okay, so I just wanted to comment on the Street Fest. Thank you so much for your positive comments. And by the way, we extended the number of evenings. Used to be four Thursdays in the past. This year, it was six. Oh, it'll be six. The last one, keep in mind, is next, this Thursday. So please don't miss that. That's the last one. That's the sixth of the sixth State Fest Festival. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda.
I think there's more.
Please come up.
I'm Shirley Myers, and-
Please sign in, Shirley.
This is, I'm disappointed that the state of the city luncheon is not at Sims Park. More people were able to go, the cost was better, the food was better. I was very disappointed in the Bravo Awards because we sat in the back and we couldn't see anything, and I literally could not eat my lunch, because it wasn't particularly good. And now that I get the invitation for the state of the city lunch at the main again, and now it's $50, and I'm very disappointed. And not as many normal citizens like myself can necessarily afford $50 lunches. So if you take that in consideration when you plan things, I know you want to support the main and everything, but let's let outsiders pay it, and let the city's people in Bellflower hear what's going on in the city, if you could.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Moving on to item 11A, Mr. Stewart?
This is a long one. Consideration possible, I should conduct a public hearing to consider mitigated negative declaration, a general plan amendment, and exemption from certain zoning regulations for public projects, and a zone change. First action is adopt resolution number 21-29, a resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration number MND 23-01, prepared for the stormwater capture and teen and senior center projects, a general plan amendment and a zone change. Two, approving general plan amendment case number GPA 23-02, to change the land use designation from commercial to open space on properties located at 9402 Oak Street and 16614 Clark Avenue. And three, finding that the stormwater capture and teen centers projects are public projects that are exempt from certain zoning regulations pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code 17.04.120. Read by title only, wait further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1425, an ordinance approving zone change case number ZC 2302, to change the zoning designation from general commercial to open space on properties located at 9402 Oak Street, formerly 9410 Oak Street, and the applicant is the city of Bellflower.
It wasn't so clear. All right, who's going to be making the report, the presentation?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coops.
Is this the time when I can refuse?
Yes, it's the time.
I have property located within 300 feet, I believe, on Main Street, so I am going to be conflicted out of this particular project, so I'll dismiss myself.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops is recusing himself on item 11A. Anyone else? Okay.
Good.
All right. So Mrs. Oba, Mrs. Concepcion.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Before you tonight are four requests, starting with adopting a mitigated negative declaration. The MND is an environmental document required for CEQA compliance. The MND was prepared for the projects involving the construction of the stormwater capture facility and the teen and senior center at Sims Park, which we're going to refer to these projects as the Sims Park Projects. Although the projects are two separate projects, the MND cover the projects together because of their proximity to each other and also the potential for concurrent or consecutive construction phases. The second request is to approve general plan amendment case number 2302. This would allow a change of land use designation from commercial to open space, and this would only apply to two parcels for the project located on this, on, one being the women's club property, and the other one's partially where the teen and senior center would be located. And the third request would be to approve a zone change. This would allow for a change of zoning designation from general commercial CG to open space OS. The proposed zone change applies to the same properties, 9410 Oak Street and 9402 Oak Street, noted for the general plan amendment, to make sure that the land use and the zoning designations are consistent with each other. The fourth would be to find that the stormwater capture and teen and senior center projects are exempt from certain zoning regulations. This would be pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code Section 17.04.120. This would exempt the projects from zoning reviews as they are public projects. Before you is an aerial of photos of Sims Park. Sims Park is located at the southeast intersection of Clark Avenue and Oak Street, and measures approximately 12.7 acres. The dark blue outline represents the project area where the stormwater capture facility and the teen and senior center projects are proposed- center projects are proposed, as well as the properties where the GPA and the zone change are being proposed. The light blue outline, right here, represents the approximate area where the subsurface storage for the stormwater capture facility is proposed. And the orange outline represent the approximate area where the new teen and senior center is proposed to be constructed, which spans over two lots. So this is currently zone CG, this one's OS. Before you is the site plan, or conceptual site plan for the stormwater capture project. The stormwater capture system will be located underground in the eastern portion of Sims Park, which contains the existing baseball softball fields, picnic area and landscape areas. This project entails construction of diversion, diversion structure, diversion pipeline, stormwater pretreatment device, storage reservoir, discharge system and treatment, and some park improvements. The storage reservoir would have a capacity of 9.34 acre feet with an approximate one acre rectangular footprint. Again, it's highlighted here in blue. The excavation depth of this project is approximately 25 to 28 feet. And the purpose of the stormwater capture facility is to decrease the amount of pollutants in stormwater runoff entering the storm drain. A more detailed description of this project is included on page three of your staff report. The second component is the teen and senior center, which will cover the northwestern portion of the Sims Park property, the existing cement pads that currently occupy the vacant lot, which is right around here, would be removed, as with the building housing the city's volunteer center operations, which is currently right around this area, will be, um, would be demolished. Um, currently located, uh, with this property is, which is the teen, or rather, the volunteer center is currently south of the Women's Club property. The teen and senior center is proposed to be single-story at a height of about 26 feet and eight inches, with a floor area of 12,355 square feet. As part of the development of the teen and senior center, improvements would also include redevelopment of the parking lot to the east and also south for a, a better circulation. The teen and senior center building would contain a reception area, community and youth rooms, private offices, a common space, a kitchen, and an open patio. Anticipated hours of operation would be from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on weekdays, and 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays, with some activities on Sundays for specific occasions or events. A more detailed description of this project is included on page four of the staff report. Also, the teen and, and senior center project involves a general plan amendment, a zone change, and a lot line adjustment, which would combine, um, the two parcels. Before you are exterior renderings of, um, the teen and senior center, uh, which would be finished with brick and stucco. The entrance to the building, shown here on this rendering, would be on the south side, adjacent to the existing driveway that provides access to the site from Clark Avenue. This rendering right here would be the view from Oak Street. And we have this, um, east, um, east facade, uh, from Sims Park, and this right here is a rendering of the outdoor patio. Before is the general plan use and zoning designation, uh, request, uh, amend, or amendments. Currently, this portion right here are two properties that are currently zone CG, uh, with a land use designation of commercial. The teen and senior center site would be right here, and as you can see, portion of that teen and senior site is actually located on a CG zone property. Um, this property, all, these properties, right here is the Women's Club, portion of the teen senior center, um, center, or teen and senior center. I'd like to make clarification on page six of the staff report, the Women's Club is not located within Sims Park, and it is a separate property owned by the Women's Club of Bellflower. The proposal is to change the land use and zoning designations from commercial to open space. The approval of the GP, or general plan amendment, and the zone change would allow for the development of the teen and senior center. As previously noted, the proposed location of the teen and senior center spans across two lots, uh, currently, with different land use and zoning designations. The proposed general plan amendment will result in the same land use and zoning designation as the Sims Park, which is currently, um, open space. The approval of the land use and zoning changes for 9402 Oak Street, which is this property here, would avoid spot zoning, um, this Women's Club property, as shown above, if the land use designation and the zoning designation for Women's Club, Women's Club property are, are not changed, that parcel would be the only commercially zoned or, um, parcel within this block of, um, on Clark Avenue between Oak Street and Flower Street. The fourth request would be the pu- public project exception, as allowed per Bellflower Municipal Code Section 17.04.120. Um, the proposed physical improvement of, uh, Sims Park constitutes a public project. And by definition of public project, it is a construction or maintenance project developed on city-owned property or in this public right-of-way and designed for public use as, as approved by the City Council. The Sims Park projects qualify under this definition. For a discussion pertaining to mitigated negative declaration, um, it impacts, would be less insignificant with incorporation of mitigation measures. Um, during the public review period of the document, a total of seven comment letters were received, and a response to comments was prepared to address these comments. And that's included as attachment C of the staff report. As far as the general plan amendment, I just found that it's consistent with the goals and policies of the land use element and open space element of the Bellflower General Plan, as outlined in section five of resolution number 23-29, um, such as that open space element goal three, which is to maintain and expand the city's existing open spaces, parks and recreational facilities. And land use gen- element general, land use element goal one, policy 1.1, which is to provide land use designations, which is ma- which match the actual viable uses. For zone cha- for the zone change, it is found that the project meets the findings contained in BMC 17.104.030, as outlined in section four of ordinance number 1425, in that the proposed zone change would allow the city to provide recreation and human service programs, which meets the needs of Bellflower's diverse population. In addition, the proposed zone change would also be consistent with the open space zone properties to the south and east. As far as the zone change, it was found that the project meets the findings contained, sorry, as far as the public project exemptions, a project meets the findings out, contained in BMC 17.04.120, as outlined in section six of resolution number 23-29. One of which is that the granting of the exemption will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Staff would also like to note that during, uh, upon receipt of the public hearing notice, we did receive an inquiry pertaining to the GPA and the zone change, um, from the Women's Club. Uh, at that time, the inquiry indicated that members were concerned about whether they could continue the use of, uh, the property. And, um, she was informed that with the GPA, with the proposed GPA and zone change, they could continue their use, and it would be considered grandfathered in, as long as they don't abandon the use for more than 180 days, or expand the use. And I was informed at that time that they would be actually present at this meeting. For a recommendation, um, open the public hearing, take, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 23-29. And read by title only, wait further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1425, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes staff's presentation, unless there are any questions. Um, also joining us tonight, I want to introduce Ms. Emily Sekleki, our, um, environmental consultant from DUDAC, who prepared the mitigated negative declaration for the Sims Park projects.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ravina. And first of all, I want to thank the Planning Department and DUDAC, our consultants, for this very comprehensive report. I read all the way to the, uh, response to the, um, uh, comments, including the ones from sanitation district and, and the tribal nations. Uh, well done, well documented, thank you so much. Uh, I'm just kind of struck with the statement you made, and also part of the, uh, the staff report on page six, about, um, if you look, show the, um, the map where the, um, there you go. There you go. So you made a statement that, uh, Carl, maybe, I don't want to blind you, okay, just in case. You say that, uh, this would be the only commercial property left if not changed, if the zoning is not changed on this portion. This is the only commercial prop- property on this whole block, from Flower Street all the way to Oak. But how, there's the, there's the church here, there's the medical clinic here, and there's Uncle Bud's, right? So what are the zoning for those three?
They are actually zoned R3, which is multiple residential zone.
R3?
Correct. Um, religious facilities are traditionally permitted within the R3. So, um, yeah, so.
I am shocked.
They're allowed, excuse me, mayor, they're allowed in R3?
Um, religious institutions are, so.
The medical building and, and Uncle Bud's?
Um, those would be considered, um, existing legal non-conforming.
So it was zoned correctly and it got changed at one time?
I believe the citywide zoning occurred in 1998, at which point most of Clark Avenue were rezoned.
Hmm. I see, okay. That was, that was shocked to me, especially the medical clinic. Okay, so anyway, thanks for the clarification. So you clarified with the Women's Club that, um, basically they will be, if this, if the proposal tonight goes ahead, uh, they will keep the, um, their grand, basically grandfathered.
That is correct. Um, the highlighted area here actually are two properties.
Hmm.
Um, this, uh, portion right here is the Women's Club, and then this portion right here is actually where a portion of the teen and senior center would be built. So the teen and senior center will actually be straddling this property line right here.
All right, okay, good. Um, and then, um, one of the things that I, I, I'm kind of curious about is there was, there was a comment about the, um, encouraging more walking bicycle, and you mentioned about EV charging stations, once this is built. So how many charging stations are planned? I think that comment came from...
Mr. Mayor, if I remember correctly, I, I want to say it was six, and they're planned, they're planned, they're not going in. They're just planned, am I correct? So they're going to prepare the wiring for it.
They'll be wired.
But they won't be completed.
Because I just want to make sure that that comment basically was responded to. Yeah, because they're trying to say, we're, we're encouraging bicycling and less, less cars, and, and then part of this, which is actually, you can take it either good or bad, we're increasing the number of parking spaces. And that's we're trying to comment, if you're increasing the parking spaces, you're actually encouraging more driving, that was the comment.
Hmm.
Right? And the response from the staff or DUDAC was, well, we're going to provide charging stations to kind of offset that concern.
Correct, partly because it's also a requirement for the building code, uh, to have, um, EV charging, uh, not station, but EV, EV-ready, um, spaces.
Right, right, exactly, okay. So we just need to provide that, um, at some point in time.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any question of, uh, Mrs. Concepcion or our consultant, council member Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, thank you for the report. Um, just a question for clarification, and maybe this isn't the right time to do this, but eh, or maybe it is, and, but the question I have is, um, the different parcels that are on this, on this map overall, right, you have, uh, I'm going to look at the actual smaller map, because I can't read it from here. You have 9446 Oak, 9438 Oak, and then you have 16518 Clark. Is there a reason, and then of course you have 9410, is there a reason why we, we aren't merging these parcels? Everything but the Women's Club, so that we can have a uniform?
We're, we're actually not merging, um, oh, correct, you're, we're not merging the properties, all of the Sims Park property. The only ones that are being merged are those where the potential, or the proposed teen and senior center would actually be straddling a property line. So, um, at this point, there's no plan to merge the other, uh, properties that's within the Sims Park area. Um, potentially because if we were to merge more than four parcels, that would actually be subject to subdivision map act, uh, as a, a tract map rather than a lot line adjustment, or a parcel map, parcel or a tract map, as opposed to a lot line adjustment, which is done administratively.
Okay, very good, thank you for, that's it, that's my, that was my only question on that.
All right, thank you. Council member Dunn?
Yeah, that's, got some of my questions answered, but that was, Victor, I was on the same track as you, tract map, yeah. So we're just erasing a property line there.
We are adj- adjusting.
It's easier to erase than move.
That is correct, so we are actually, um,
Just erasing it.
Doing the adjustment for this specific one right here.
We're just making it go away.
Sorry, superimposing existing lot lines, so that the building would not straddle it.
Right, okay.
No, no, not, not yet, ma'am.
Not yet. What's directly across the Women's Club on Oak Street, oh, it's on the corner on the other side of the street, is that commercial, or has it been rezoned?
I think there, it's a house.
The house there?
It's a house, right next to the, um, the dental office.
So that property is 16428, and according to the zoning map, that is zoned R2.
That's R2.
Correct, medium density residential.
And what about the property that's uh, east, I mean, excuse me, west of the Women's Club, directly across the corner of the west, uh, southwest corner of Oak and Clark?
That is zone CG, general commercial.
That's CG there.
Yeah, that, that intersection is kind of off, it's not that direct cross-street.
Yeah. I, I get the, the spot zoning is what we're trying to clean up, I get that. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, any other questions?
I got my questions answered earlier.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
I'll second a motion, um, motion by council member Sanchez, seconded by the mayor, uh, to open the public hearing without objection, that will be the order. Now's your chance to speak about this item. Again, please sign in again, so that the city clerk can, can accurately record your testimony.
Thank you. My thoughts and concern about the whole thing is I don't know how many trees you guys are going to end up cutting down. But I do know that hawks come in and nest in those trees. They raise their eggs and birth their chicks. Now what about that?
Lou, can you try to respond to that, because I read the report? Uh, trees will, trees will be cut down, but they're going to be, plant more trees. And based on their response, they will take care of all the birds to make sure that if they're nesting within April and September.
They're going to cut down all the trees?
Yeah, pardon me? No, certain number of trees will be cut down, but there's going to be more trees replanted after.
I'm sure of that, but these hawks have been coming back year after year.
No, ma'am, listen to me, they will, they will take care of the nesting. Uh, there's a process to do that, to make sure that, um, birds that are nesting are not disturbed.
Right, thank you.
They have to follow the process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I get it right?
Yes, sir.
I tried.
You did a good job.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Take, take your choice. Make your choice, Jenna.
Hi, I'm Jenna, president of the women's club. I have some questions, of course. I just want to clarify and make sure I have a understanding. So the, the corner, the 9402 Oak Street, is still gonna remain commercially zoned? It will not be open space zoned?
It, it will be rezoned. If we approve this, it will be rezoned, but you can continue using the property the way, the way you're using now.
So it, it's going to be open space zoned?
As far as the zoning is concerned.
Okay.
Yes.
The, so it will not be commercially zoned, but we're still gonna be allowed to do what we do. And our address of 9402 is still going to be the women's club address, or is 9402 going to be, the teen center, women's club, is the, is the teen center gonna have a separate address?
Because it will be combined, right? Okay.
Yes, the teen center will have a separate address. The women's club, nothing changes in terms of their address.
I'm just, you know, got a lot of questions going, so I thought I'd check it out.
Yeah, there's no change in the women's club. You can operate the way you're operating now, except there's only a couple of conditions. You cannot abandon it for 18, for?
For more than 180 days or expand the use.
Or expand the use?
Correct.
Is there a definition of expand the use? Like, we can't go bigger, we can't, it, it can't turn into a different type of organization? Like, it can't turn into a church?
So typically, it would be square footage operation-wise. You are, the, the property is considered a, well, right now as we speak, the property is, I believe a clubhouse is what the permit shows. It can stay as a clubhouse. And in changing it, if we were, if the city council approves the OS zone or that zone change, it would be still a conditionally permitted use. So that use is already conditionally permitted use as it exists. And even with the change of zone, it will remain a conditionally permitted use.
Okay, and we don't have to do any conditional use permits on an annual basis to maintain that? So I'm just checking. And then one other question for the driveway that we have that goes into the women's club. It's behind the women's club and between the women's club and the volunteer center. There's a driveway.
It's, oh, wait, it's going this way, right?
Yes.
Yeah, behind the building.
Will we still have that driveway? As far as the property line goes?
Does the women's club owns it?
I believe we do.
So, no, we're not taking away your property.
The, the question, there's a reason, there's,
Where's access? Ask where access is.
I think the access is on Clark.
It's access specifically on Clark, and there's a driveway behind it.
It's accessed on Clark. You're fine.
Okay, that's, that was my question, because that's how I get in.
Yeah, it's your property.
It's your property.
If I have to deal with stuff, I'm in trouble, so I'm checking.
I thought you were gonna tell me it was access to Sims parking lot, then they were gonna follow, okay.
No, it's, it's just a driveway, and I'm just making sure we're not, it's actually built up to the women's club building where the driveway's cut off. That's, that's what I'm checking.
No, no, no.
My understanding is where the, the fence post is.
So this is, and I'm not sure if it's clear, but this is the property line right here.
Or there's a driveway, right, and then that's where the property line is? I got my glasses on, but I still can't see it.
That could be that small portion there.
Is that?
The dark, the dark color.
Yes, yes. That's the driveway that I'm asking about. And then I have one last question. When it comes to the parcel lot number for the property tax, and I don't have our property tax statement with us, is that the same as what you have referred to in this? Is the?
For, for your property, or?
Yeah.
In the parcel number?
Is it gonna be a whole different?
Your parcel number is gonna, will not change.
It's gonna stay the same, right?
Yeah, it will not change.
Okay, I'm just clarifying and just getting some things in my head, right, as far as all the lines.
I think the bottom line here is, there's no, we're not gonna touch your property at all, that's it.
I'm just getting it.
Just the zoning, that's it.
An understanding of the address and the things like that.
There's no change on the address.
Okay.
Just the zoning.
Okay, and, and that also, the zoning, and how it's gonna affect?
If you own the driveway, you still own the driveway.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for your time.
Of course, yes. We want to make sure that you're a happy neighbor. All right, anyone else would like to testify on this item?
Off, off the top of my head, but I just don't understand why you have to rezone our property to match your property. If we own that property, how can you rezone it? That's like you coming in and saying, my house is gonna be rezoned. Well, what gives you that authority to do that? And why would you do it in the first place? Does that make any sense?
It does. But there's, there's a reason.
There's a reason, okay.
Councilmembers, so there's a little bit of background to this as well, and I'll kind of go back. So originally, when we started the mitigated negative declaration process, there were still negotiations with the women's club on whether the city would, you know, have a portion or acquire the property to do the teen center. So that's where it all stemmed from. So not knowing which way that was gonna go, we needed to proceed with the environmental, so we thought, okay, let's go ahead and propose a zone change in general plan amendment, because even if the city doesn't acquire the parcel, it, it's okay, we can still design around it, but it incorporates all of that corner. And then from a, just a general planning and land use standpoint, it made sense to incorporate the last two CG zone properties to OS, open space to round out the corner. So there's a little bit of background there, and then from a planning standpoint, it just makes sense because there's a small sliver that's left commercial. We did provide proper noticing, so that's why we're having a public hearing today, and the women's club was informed of such through the public noticing process. But ultimately, it would be the planning, I'm sorry, it would be the city council's decision if you wanted to include the women's club as part of the general plan amendment and zone change. You certainly don't have to. It's just from a best practices standpoint, from a planning standpoint, it makes more sense.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the question was, how can the city do it?
Yeah.
The city can do it because the city has police powers under the California constitution and makes determinations with regard to zoning throughout the city. One of the things that's been discussed tonight is that the, that particular piece of property would remain legal nonconforming. But if that use ever goes away, that zone becomes OS, which is recreational purposes, which is what the city intends for that property to be in order for it to be integrated into the overall property. So if, if the women's club use goes away for whatever reason, then that zoning will go OS, and that is the intent behind legal nonconforming uses, which is eventually they will conform with the, the zone within which they are located. So that's true for the entire city. As the city council knows, city goes through periodic rezoning of various parts of the city, and that's always the case. You can see that in residential neighborhoods, commercial neighborhoods, et cetera. There are little pockets of places where the old zoning allowed that particular use, and so those are legal nonconforming uses. But over time, as those uses change, they will conform with the overall zone within that area.
And you have an example just south of the area, you know, the medical building, the church, and the,
Right, R3.
Which are R3, but they've been there for 40 years, you know.
Well, just like, I, I think the main justification is, we're trying to avoid spot zoning.
Correct. And if, you know, and the, the bottom line is, I think council made it very clear to the women's club, we're completely fine with the women's club being there for as long as they want to be. We love the use. However, if that use were to change, we want it to be open space, and I think that's been the intent of the council all along in this process.
Okay. All right, you're welcome. All right, anyone else?
All right, motion to close the public hearing.
Before we do that, I gotta hold that, hold that thought.
Okay, go ahead.
I know if something's open space, the city doesn't pay any, there's no property tax. Does it affect the tax role, tax rolls on that property being open space?
So as long as they operate their current certain use, their property tax situation doesn't change at all. But once the use changes, then it's taxed accordingly.
Got it, so there's, okay, so the tax rolls wouldn't affect the tax rolls. I thought maybe you're gonna get a break on property tax.
It's a good try.
I was trying for you.
It's a good try, but it's based on current use, whatever it's used for.
Got it.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a second to close the public hearing.
All right, motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Dunton to close the public hearing without objection, that, without objection, that will be the order. All right. What are the due honors?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 23-29, a resolution, one, adopting mitigated negative declaration number MND 23-01, prepared for the stormwater capture and teen and senior center project, a general plan amendment and a zone change. Two, approving general plan amendment case number GPA 23-02, to change the land use designation from commercial to open space on properties located at 9402 Oak Street and 16614 Clark Avenue, and formerly 9410 Oak Street. And three, finding that the stormwater capture and teen and senior center project are, are public projects that are exempt from certain zoning regulations pursuant to Bellflower municipal code. And then read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1425, an ordinance approving zone change case number ZC 2302, to change the zoning designation from general commercial to open space on properties located at 9402 Oak Street and 11614 Clark Avenue.
Okay.
I think you got one more line.
Well, I guess formerly 9410 Oak Street. As requested by the applicant city of Bellflower.
You just stopped. I'll second that.
Actually, the city manager read the whole thing already earlier, so.
You both did an excellent job.
Let me read it again. Motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Dunton, to adopt resolution number 23-29, and introduce ordinance 1425. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, women's club, thank you so much for your testimony. Thanks, thank you for coming. All right, can someone grab Councilmember Coops? Oh, he's here. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops has rejoined the meeting. Item 13, 13A, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the agenda item indicates, these are proposed amendments to the employment contracts for the city manager and the city clerk. The proposed amendments would include a 3.2% increase to the base salary for both of these officials. This coincides with the proposed resolutions in 14L and 14M on your consent calendar, as indicated in the description for this agenda item. That would increase the city manager's base salary to $8,100 to a total salary of $262,269, with a corresponding increase in taxes and benefits of approximately $2,000. For the city clerk, there would be an increase in salary by approximately $4,300 for a total salary of $140,084. And it would also have a corresponding increase in taxes and benefits by approximately $1,100. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question of Mr. Berger? I just have a comment about this. I think these increases to the city managers and city clerks' compensation are well deserved.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'd like a motion for approval, because I feel the same way as the mayor.
That's a comment request, so I agree with that comment, and I second that motion.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to approve the recommendation from the city, city attorney, right? City attorney. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, we're moving along. Item 14, consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts?
Mr. Mayor, I am, got a conflict on 14F.
14F?
It has to do with the placement of property in relation to Sims Park.
Okay.
So I'm out on 14F. And then I wanna, we'll discuss 14D. I'd like to have some explanation of that.
14D, okay. Okay, anyone else? Any recusals? Any items to be pulled? All right, 14D, Mr. Coops.
All right, so talks here about cannabis education funding. I think the mayor's bringing that forward, so maybe you could give a little explanation what your thoughts are?
Okay, I, I asked this, this staff for, to introduce a Bellflower photo contest to engage the citizens, the residents of Bellflower, for their creativity and, and also to promote different places in the city. So the vision is for the residents to take photos of a certain month of the year, I think we designated September or October, within the city, and this contest is open to residents only of the city. And there will be two divisions. One is for the youth division, and one is for the adult division. And we were, I was able to, to negotiate, but part of the deal is, we want to kind of, or I want to make sure that those who are participating are really serious, because I don't want people just take snapshots and take, and send it to city staff. That's gonna be a lot of entries. So it's gonna be limited to, to one per participant. And also, we're able to negotiate a sponsorship with Ungraphics, and they will, they will print the photo at $5 apiece. It's about 18 by, 12 by 18, so it's gonna be standard size. So again, the, the objective of this is to engage our residents in terms, in terms of their creativity. And at the, at the very end, there will be a reception at the lobby of City Hall. We will stop, select the staff who volunteered, who had experience in, in selecting photos to, to screen out the good photos worthy of, based on certain criteria. And they will be displayed at the, at the lobby of City Hall, and then we will have about four, four judges who are really professional judges, independent of the city, to finally select first, second, and third winners for each division. And there's gonna be some kind of incentive. I think the price is $100 for the first prize. Second prize is 50, third prize is 25 for the junior division, and then for a senior division or adult division, 200, 150. And it's all gonna be gift cards, okay? And since, since the, the prices will be in the form of gift card, we thought that using the cannabis fund to use those for the gift cards and for some other expenses like ESOS and things like, so it's gonna be very minimal cost.
Yeah, and the rationale is that it's a, this is a great diversionary program for, other than using drugs, and we think it's a legitimate use of the.
And we promoted on our website?
It's not open yet. Uh, it's not open yet.
No, but when you begin the process.
Oh, yeah, it will be, it will be, it will be. Uh, in fact, I just went to the staff last week to finalize all the, all the, because I gave them all my vision, and they, they run with it.
Describe the kind of judge you're hoping to participate. Are there gonna be teachers that teach art, or are they gonna be-
Teachers. Uh, I don't wanna name names, but two will be from Sereno's College, and one from Mayfair, and one from Bellflower High.
Oh, you got it all figured out, huh? And your priest, and your, no, no, okay.
So hopefully, they're gonna be very, very independent, and they're very knowledgeable. I think you have seen the work of, um, a couple of high school students from Bellflower High at the Robert Garcia's, um, Art Festival.
Okay.
And the two that were displayed here are basically gra, um, high school students from Bellflower High. So I met a teacher, and, uh, I'm gonna contact her. I think she's gonna, uh, be one of the judges.
So it can be any subject matter. It could be people, places?
Yes.
Animals?
Animals.
The neighbor?
Within the city of Bellflower.
Black, white, or color, makes no difference?
Yes, make no difference.
Okay.
Yeah, but they need to identify exactly where they took the picture.
And the date? All right, would be interested in knowing that.
The, the pic, the photo's gonna be taken, should be taken between September first and October thirty-first.
Because I'm gonna say, there are people out there that might think they have a photo they would like to submit. They took five years ago.
No, no, it's gonna be-
All right, so you got, we gotta define that.
Yes, very defined. Two months.
Okay.
Two months, very defined. Okay, and then if they're taking photos of individuals, they need to have a consent for those individuals. I think we get pretty much covered.
No, I, I read it. I think it's a great idea, and I just wanted you to expound upon it so that the public can know what you're thinking.
Yes, I'm very excited about this, and I think staff are excited too.
Look at the enthusiasm. All right, it's overwhelming.
All right. Is that clear?
I think crystal.
Crystal. All right, very good. All right, with that, uh, is there a motion to approve the, the consent calendar?
Move it. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Danton, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, uh, to approve the consent calendar, noting that, um, Councilmember Coops is recusing himself on item fourteen F. Okay, we got it, city clerk? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, council reports. Uh, Councilmember Dutton?
I have nothing tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Coops?
I'm with Mr. Dutton. I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez?
I'll break that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just really quickly, I wanna report, uh, that you did a wonderful job presenting the Bellflower Connect to the, uh, Bellflower Kiwanis Club last Friday, uh, and thank you for, thank you for, uh, going out and, uh, and sharing the details and, uh, and the program to our, to our residents. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you so much. My only comment here is, um, the new school year started for Bellflower, uh, Unified School District last Thursday, so just please be aware when you drive, be careful about these kids, uh, and it's gonna be very, it's gonna be dark very soon. So I'd like to welcome all the students, especially those, um, attending Bellflower Unified School District. Welcome to this new school year, and make it a great year. So with that, we're adjourning this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is adjourned.